All ready? Perfect. I'd like to call the order, uh, the reg- I'm sorry, I would like to call the regular meeting into order of the Bogota Board of Education for Tuesday, June thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-three. Please stand for the flag salute. Good evening, everyone. The New Jersey Open Publics Meeting Law was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advance notice of and to attend the meetings of the public bodies at which any business affecting their interests is discussed or acted upon. In accordance with the provisions of this act, the Board of, the Bogota Board of Education has cause notice of this meeting to be published by having the date, time, and place thereof posted in the Bogota Borough Hall communicated, communicated by letter to the record, file with the clerk of the Borough of Bogota, and posted on the Bogota Board of Education website. Mr. Erfan, roll call.
Mrs. Alvarez.
Present.
Mr. Alvarez.
Present.
Mr. Chavez.
Absent.
Mrs. Cruz.
Present.
Mr. Navarro.
Present.
Mr. Olivo.
Present.
Mr. Ortega.
Present.
Mr. Racket.
Present.
Mr. Miranda.
Present.
We have the call.
For the record, Mr. Chavez is on business travel and sends his regards. Also present are Superintendent Damian Kennedy, Board Attorney William Sukis, School Business Administrator, Board Secretary Erfan Efsel, Assistant Board Secretary Elizabeth Reese, and no student representative tonight. Moving on to section two point one, opening the floor to hearing on citizens, for citizens on agenda items only. Do you have a motion or move hearing on citizens?
Motion.
Mrs. Rocket, Mrs. Olivo, is that a second?
Yes.
Thank you. Any board discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Is there any member they would like to come up and discuss any or ask any questions on agenda items only? Please feel free to do so. Please state your name and street address. You have five minutes. Anyone from the public? One online? I'd like to close. I'd like to motion to close hearing on citizens.
Motion, Olivo.
Mrs. Olivo, is that a second, Mrs. Rocket?
It is.
Thank you. Any board discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. We move on to section three dot one on the, on the agenda. Superintendent's report, Mr. Kennedy.
Okay, another school year in the books. We have a couple of things to discuss. First, some end of the year ceremonies and programs have been taking place the last two weeks. For the first time ever, we had a joint concert with Bixby and Steen students at the high school. It was very well attended and the students did a great job. It was truly a great sight to see all students on stage performing together. We also had our academic awards night, and I want to publicly thank one of our vendor, vendors, Alamo Insurance for offering up two scholarships for graduating seniors. Hopefully, this is something that we can get more vendors involved in on the future. Graduation ceremony started last night. Bixby, for the first time that I can remember, had to have their graduation at Steen School, but it was an excellent job by the staff and students. Next will be Steen on Wednesday night. The middle school will be graduating in this gym on Thursday night, and then hopefully the high school will be at Feigl Field on Friday night, pending weather. If not, we will be in here, but we are following very closely and are hoping for clear skies. All ceremonies begin at six thirty. Next, each year we participate in the Bergen County Teacher Education Educator Professional Recognition Program. One teacher in each building has distinguished themselves during the year as an infector, effective instructor, established a productive classroom environment, and has helped develop feelings of self-worth and love of learning in students. Earlier this month, the four winners attended the countywide luncheon and were given certificates of excellence. Tonight, we like to recognize them publicly. When I call your name, please come forward and pose with the board president, Mr. Frank Miranda, up front. First up from the high school, Ms. Teresa Enriquez. Mr. Enriquez, stay up here so we get a group photo. Next up from the middle school, Ms. Lynn Dematracas. From Bixby School, Laura Ketchum. And from Steen, Callie Skrenich. Tonight, it is also my pleasure to honor four high school seniors who have accomplished a tremendous academic feat. A few years ago, highly motivated students were identified for a new program at Bergen Community College. The four students worked hard not only on their high school curriculum, but also enrolled in courses at B C C. Their hard work has paid off because these students graduated with their associate's degree from Bergen Community College earlier this month. The following students are honored tonight with a plaque that reads, "In recognition of your graduation from Bogota Junior Senior High School with an associate's degree from Bergen Community College, when I call your name, please come to receive your plaque from Board President, Mr. Miranda." First up, Valerie Berito. Studying, studying. Amisha Sin. Let me take a picture with her. Kareem Abid. Yassina Abid. Congratulations to the students and their families, and thank you for making us all very proud of your accomplishments. We're going to take one group photo together.
Does anyone can't read it? Very nice. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Very nice.
That's great. That is great.
And finally, tonight, we recognize two educators who have spent a total of sixty years of service working for the Bogota's school district. Their dedication and love for working with students will be missed. Tonight, we get to say a final goodbye and present them with a small token of our gratitude. The plaque reads, "Presented in grateful appreciation for your dedication and service to the children and the community of Bogota School Districts." When I call your name, please come forward and receive your plaque from the board president. The first person has been working as a math teacher in district since nineteen ninety-eight. She's also been a senior class advisor and takes responsibility for the senior prom and the senior class trip each year. And as me, being a very young vice principal, I used to lean on her to get a pulse of the building each day to see how things were going. At this time, I'd like to call up Ms. Joan Fry. And stay up, Fry, stay up. Stay up. Let me take a picture again. Lastly, John Sterling has been teaching mathematics in Bogota since nineteen eighty-eight. He's coached just about every sport at one time here, but has had some really great girls' basketball and football teams. More importantly, over the last four years, he served as the B E A president. And I want to mention this because during COVID, we worked extremely well together and did a tremendous job of doing what was best for students and staff during a time when many districts were falling apart. I know he will end up back in the classroom as soon as he's eligible to teach because it's something he truly loves, Mr. John Sterling.
Thank you for your service. As a previous student elsewhere, you value those that take the tenure and longevity of teaching with all of us. And, Mr. Sterling, for myself and the people of the board, most of the part of negotiations that really bought us, helped us, and those all parents, we appreciate that. Thank you very much. So, I'm sure most of you know, uh, this is a bitter sweet one because I think we've all embraced him and he embraced our dating. Uh, he brought something different to us in Bogota, to our children. I think they've all tested that. I've had numerous conversations, all with P T O, and there was sort of, um, I, I honestly said, I've never seen A D H D work as science. Uh, I can hear this through the roof, through the stairs, through the walls. And I think, uh, we help us understand what we needed looking forward to the future. And one of the things that I noticed Bogota does, it's like a weird, I don't call it platform, it's a purple. It really drives a lot of pride. Uh, once you're here, it's all about, all about what the baby is. You start wearing the same colors. Uh, and I'm going to really, I'm going to get sharing tonight. Definitely be. It's just, it's, it's very interesting. And you, you get this advanced pride and a bond to really build the pride on. He really, you know, spearheaded the middle school. I would tell a lot of people that were very worried about, uh, they, you know, it's hard to step out of your comfort and you're used to what you're used to. But I'm a big believer, and I think with my beliefs, uh, that if one door closes, another one opens. And for you, you know, some people have that way over the last few months. Many of the reservation, uh, council, uh, say they know everyone who talks to the building, and then they move on. And they consider that a bad thing. Well, I know you're going to move on, but our experience is you're going to move on with the opportunities to be provided this year, the love that we gave you and the love you give back to us. And you're going to be able to use that. And somewhere after your superintendency, for those who don't know, is the next superintendency of the caucus. And that's just amazing because the last thing I want to ever say is a person who went back to be a teacher, right? I said, this is my opinion, if, if you go higher, we did it, right? So, take some credit for that. I want to congratulate you, my dear, my dear sister, my brother. I want to thank you on behalf of all of us. You know, I think we were immense for this, and that this school, and then yours now. And your leadership and, you know, and I hope that whatever, whatever station opened up in our history, I truly pray and hope that the next person who adopts, I don't know, adopts our pride and, and, and the derivative Bogota carries along. So, I'm going to give you a plaque. I don't think it's ever been done for someone leaving the district, but I remember first week of August, last week of July, you called me about having some lunch. And you were thinking all the way up with that. And I saw you introduce, we opened the doors, baby, right there with our staff, right there with everyone else. And, and that, that is a lot to say there. I mean, for you loving it, from one or the past.
So, uh, we'll start with, let's say, uh, Bogota has been in the last four years, and just seeing the United College quote out of this district, especially over the past year, it's, it's effective into the staff, administration, board, and the relentless desire to keep progressing. It has been hands down the most fulfilling and enriching experience of my life. You are a veteran. I've teared up probably three times. I've seen your colleagues in the news, with staff, staying, nonsense, I got cleared up. Uh, and just from part of worship years. It's been, it's been good to meet you, like Mr. Brian said. So, real quick, I just want to give a shout out and thank you to Mr. Kennedy because I will never forget that in my interview with this question was, where do you see yourself five years from now? And I thought I was a comedian, like somebody in the room. And I said, oh, sitting in this, like, doors. And he just looked at me and said, like, he said, well, you're going to get the experience. If that's what you want to do, you're going to get it here. You're going to get a little fair share of everything that we have to offer. And that's exactly what I was, it was an experience when the woman walked in. So, it's after he wondered where promotions are, something I've done before. So, I wanted to thank you, Mr. Kennedy, for giving me that opportunity and all of our experiences. And thank you all, because we're always a big family. Thank you.
I would like to motion to take a ten-minute recess uh, so that everyone can, you know, farewell, say hello, have some coffee. Um, I have a motion.
Motion.
Mrs. Rocket, second, Mrs. Olivo, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. We'll be, we'll reconvene in ten minutes, seven thirty-two? May I have a motion to reopen the public meeting?
Motion Navarro.
Mr. Navarro, Mrs. Cruz, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. I'm assuming you need a microphone? So that's.
That's good. Yes.
Don't be rude.
No, I mean, I'll knock it over. Good. Good.
Oh, you guys are too much.
Scott, can you change that when it's ready? Okay. Good evening. So yes, we wanted to provide an update on where we are at the referendum. So it's been basically exactly three months. We have been actively working on lots of projects. One of the things we wanted to show you most importantly is the schedule for the duration of the referendum. At least we've laid that out with careful consideration for things like the timing of the summer, summer programs, how it affects the students. We've looked at things like how subcontractors line up for the costs for efficiency, the lead times on a lot of products. Obviously, we still know there's immense delays in some products. So we've looked at that in reference to the schedule. Can you switch? Keep going. Yeah, so timing and then also a big factor in how we lay out the projects is the timing of the bids. So the later you go out to bid, the later, the more, the higher the cost will be, right? So the contractors gets, their plates get full. We need to get out on the street with the projects as early as possible for the following year so we can get good competition with the contractors and hopefully get lower prices. So that's some of the factors we look at. You can switch. So just to look at all the projects, we've organized it into nine projects. And, you know, this is not 100% set in stone. Things will be fluid as change, but this is the guide right now. So first project, looking at Feagle Field, we've already started. We've been actively working on it since April. We are looking at finishing construction, designing construction documents by the end of the year and then looking at a March start for construction. And I have a more detailed schedule. We'll get into that. And then hopefully done by September of 2024. One of the things we're noting here is we might have to stop baseball season a little bit early to get this work done, but these are some of the things we have to work through. Project number two, we have the renovations to the CTE building. And we have that also starting. We've already started working on that. Looking again at bidding towards the end of this year, basically around December of this year. And then that would start immediately after in January and go for basically an entire year. We're giving it a year duration. It might be a little more than that's necessary, but it is a big project because it's a gut renovation. Next project is renovations at Bigsby School, which is what we need to do to basically realign the grades. So we need to add those bathrooms at the Bigsby School. So we have seven classrooms where toilets do that will allow the grading realignment. And we're looking at that to be completed by September of '24, which would likely be when realignment would be possible, but there are other items to consider. So that's still up in the air. And then fourth project is the renovations to the gymnasium also at Bigsby. This is to make the space larger, so taking over the music room and making that a bigger space, pushing the stage back. This will also help with the grade realignment, but not necessarily the requirement. So we've pushed that out to the year 2025. We also have electrical project, electrical upgrades at all of the schools. Again, this is to support systems in the future so we can have air conditioning. As the years go by, we can be able to add those systems. So it's upgrading the panels and the electrical service at all three schools. And probably the Bigsby upgrade for the electrical will be tied to the gymnasium requirements, the gymnasium project. I'm sorry about that. Okay. And then the toilet room, we're starting working on now for the toilet rooms at the high school here. We're looking at, we just started working on that, looking at about November being done with the drawings and outbid. And again, so that would be for 2024 summer from June to September. And then looking into the future, we have the auditorium in 2025, summer '25, the media center here in the summer of '26, and art room and some renovations to steam in also in '26. So that would close out the referendum if thing all goes as planned by the end of 20, by September of 2026. So just a little more detail on where we are for these current projects. So for the fields, we've completed all the surveying that was required, which did take several weeks. They've done geotechnical testing of the soil. They've laid out, you know, we had our concept designs that were, everybody, you know, saw all those designs. We've laid that out on accurate survey now. So it's starting to really develop into, you know, get into the details and starting to lay out nicely. We've had several meetings with the administration to talk through details like storage and the bleachers and, and a lot of things that have to be, you know, sorted through. And soon we'll be able to get you some designs to look at. So just looking ahead for this project, one of the things we still have to work on is some, locate some of the deeds. A lot of them are ancient from 1900s that we have to go to the county and try to get those. This is going to help understand where the property line actually is between the town and the school. And it's important to have that information because in order to submit to the Department of Environmental Protection, they need to have those exact boundaries. So that's something we are still actively working on. We'll continue through July. We're working on design solutions with the administration. August is probably when you'll start to see some design renderings. That would be after this month. We're going to try to meet with the town administration and get some of their input on the design as well. So into September, we're looking at submitting to the Department of Environmental Protection then. There is a 90-day minimum review period for them. So we get it to them in September. We're hoping by December that would be back to us. And in the meantime, we would be working on finalizing the rest of the design. You know, again, bleachers, storage, details like that, some of the walking paths, plantings. And then hopefully we get approval from the DEP at the end of the year and we can go out to bid then. And that allows them to get all the materials ready and start in March. And start in March on the main stadium. And then we wouldn't be looking to start on the baseball and softball till about those fields until about June. For the CTE building, right now, we're just working on putting together a community survey. So that should be coming out shortly. This is really to collect ideas on what the programs could be in that building because that's one of the most important things that still needs to be sorted and we really want to hear from the community. So, and then we just, a list of some of the programs, I mean, we've talked about these in some of the presentations, engineering, architecture, cosmology, cosmetology, culinary arts, information technology, mechanical, electrical, plumbing, performing arts. So there's a lot of options and we really want to know more about what fits this community. So that's, that's going to be the first step. And then for this project, again, we're looking at developing the drawings and having them ready to go out to bid by November, December. Probably looking at some design renderings in the October range that we would get out for presentation to you. And then basically under construction for all of '24 is what we're predicting. Next looking, so this is another one currently working on, the Bigsby School toilet renovations. And again, needed for realignment. So we've started to work on it. It's again, just showing you that there's, there's seven classrooms each set up to get a new toilet room to support the pre-K and kindergarten program. And right now, we've gotten through basically laying out the designs, surveying, and conversations with our engineers. And we're at a point where we're ready to present to the administration, just confirming that that's what, that's, you know, we're moving forward as planned. And you should start seeing renderings around August. And then finish the drawings by September and out to bid in October. And that would be a summer 2024 project. And lastly, currently working on the design for the toilets here at the high school. So there's four rooms, there's the lower level, there's a small toilet over here by the gym and on the second floor, girls' toilet room. So we're working through laying those out now, conversations with the engineers and probably some, again, renderings in August and out to bid by October. And construction in the summer of 2024. So those projects, you know, some of the ones we've laid out, the toilets at Bigsby and the high school, they're small enough projects. We should be safe for the summer, the summer months. But some of the other ones that will come up in the future, like the renovation to the gym at Bigsby, we may need to overlap into the school year. So we'll have to get into some of those details then. And we're going to keep using the referendum site on your website. We have the referendum link. So just a new wave of information is out there. So this presentation's up there and we'll continue to put progress, information, schedules, drawings as, as it comes out so that the public can stay up to date on everything. That's it. Questions?
Thank you.
Any questions, board? Sure? It's gonna be request? All right. I guess we'll go to new business. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
So moving on to 4.4, resolution, approval of minutes on, for May 9th, 2023, Work Action Meeting, Open Session. May 9th, 2023, Closed Session, and May 16th, Regular Public Meeting. Is there a motion to approve Resolution 4.4?
Motion, Olivo.
Olivo, do I have a second?
Second, Navarro.
Mr. Navarro, any board discussion? All, Mr. Erfan?
Yeah, sure. Mrs. Alvarez?
Yes.
Mr. Alvarez?
I have to abstain because I wasn't present on May 9th.
Okay. Mr. Self, is it, Mrs. Cruz?
Yes.
And the May 16th is approved.
May 16th approved.
Mr. Navarro?
Yes.
Mrs. Olivo?
Yes.
Mr. Ortega?
I would like to approve for May 9th and abstain from May 16th. And I was absent.
And Mr. Ruck?
Yes.
Mr. Miranda?
Yes.
Motion carried?
I was hoping to have one of those vacation days.
Move forward, I want to remind everyone, when you're not here, you still have the ability to read online what we've done and go through it. And if you have questions, you can reach out to anybody on the board about what, and then you would still be able to vote on.
And, and the videos are online.
And the videos are there as well. So you, you don't have to always abstain. You're able to go look at that information and that, you know, ask any questions you may have. And then you still have the right to vote on.
Correct, you've got experience with board, you understand how the minutes are put together and have faith in the process. So provided that you read it, you are able to vote and not necessarily have to abstain. Of course, if you haven't done that, then it's appropriate to abstain as well.
Thank you.
Listen, I listen when you tell us.
Not a baby board anymore.
No.
Moving on to 5.1, Resolution in the Policy Section, Reading and Adoption of the Board Policies and Regulations. Is there a motion to approve 5.1?
Motion.
Mrs. Cruz, do I have a second?
Second.
Mrs. Alvarez, any board discussion? Roll call, Mr. Erfan.
Mrs. Alvarez?
Yes.
Mr. Alvarez?
Yes.
Mrs. Cruz?
Yes.
Mr. Navarro?
Yes.
Mrs. Olivo?
Yes.
Mr. Ortega? Mrs. Ruck?
Yes.
Mr. Miranda?
Yes.
Motion carried?
Moving on to Resolution 627, which is the approval of Agenda Item 61 through 626. Is there a motion to approve 627?
Motion, John.
Do I have a second, Mr. Ortega? Do I have a second?
Second.
Mrs. Rocket, any board discussion? Roll call, Mr. Erfan.
Mrs. Alvarez?
Yes.
Mr. Alvarez?
Yes.
Mrs. Cruz?
Yes.
Mr. Navarro?
Yes.
Mrs. Olivo?
Yes.
Mr. Ortega?
Yes.
Mrs. Ruck?
Yes.
Mr. Miranda?
Yes.
Motion carried?
Thank you. Moving on to Item 735 of the Personnel, Personnel Portion of the Agenda, Approval of Item 71 through 734. Do you have a motion to move 735?
Motion, Olivo.
Ms. Olivo, do I have a second?
Second, Navarro.
Mr. Navarro, any board discussion? Erfan?
Mrs. Alvarez?
Yes.
Mr. Alvarez?
I have to abstain because of a family member complex. Number, uh, for 7-12. And I think there was one more. For 7-12.
For the coaching, Erfan?
Mm-hmm, correct.
The relative.
The rest? You say yes?
There's no.
All right, yes.
Mrs. Cruz?
Yes.
Mr. Navarro?
Yes.
Mrs. Olivo?
Yes.
Mr. Ortega?
Yes.
Mrs. Ruck?
Yes.
Mr. Miranda?
Yes.
Motion carried?
For the record, Mr. Alvarez may not have the exact, but he is abstaining to any coach relative voting. I want to take this opportunity to welcome Dr. Genie Paz, our new high school principal. I will say that it was a pleasure to meet you. It was a pleasure to listen. I think you have what the public is looking for. As you know, we're board members and we have the fortunate, I say that very lightly, to live in the same town we serve. And we get many requests and have many concerns and, and rightfully so. When, when we all heading and paving in the right direction and want more and want more. And, you know, we just welcome you. I think this board, I think you heard it tonight, this board has been extremely supportive of our superintendent, our business administrator, and the entire teaching organization. It goes without saying that we had made some amazing, amazing strides in this district. There was a previous board that did it and we just propelled it. So it's not just credit to us, I think it's credit for many years of learning, student for life. We just won a referendum, which I still get calls as to how we did it and how we succeeded because most referendums go to two to three times and we did it our first try. So, so you know what we got. We have, we have tenacity, we have the want. And we're, we were once called the baby board, but we've accomplished something that hasn't been done in 20-some years. So we welcome you, we hope you adopt these spirits. Our, I didn't say it earlier, but our attorney next to us looked around the gym and said, wow, pride. I said, you haven't seen this before? He said, no, not really. So I just want to tell you, they keep coming back. They always come back to Bogota, draws back and, and just welcome to our family. Thank you. So, so I'm moving on to portion of the agenda, Resolution 8.60, Approval of Items 8, 1 through 859. Do we have a motion to approve Resolution 860?
Olivo.
Mrs. Olivo, do I have a second?
Barrow.
Mrs. Alvarez, any board discussion? Roll call, Mr. Erfan.
Mrs. Alvarez?
Yes.
Mr. Alvarez?
Yes.
Mrs. Cruz?
Yes.
Mr. Navarro?
Yes.
Mrs. Olivo?
Yes.
Mr. Ortega?
Yes.
Mr. Ruck?
Yes.
Mr. Miranda?
See.
Motion carried?
Little ethnicity in it. Moving on to Items 9, 6, Building and Ground Section of the Agenda, which is Approval of Items 91 through 95. Is there a motion to approve Resolution 9.6?
Motion.
Mrs. Rocket, do I have a second?
Second, John.
Mr. Ortega, any discussion? Roll call, Mr. Erfan.
Mrs. Alvarez?
Yes.
Mr. Alvarez?
Yes.
Mrs. Cruz?
Yes.
Mr. Navarro?
Yes.
Mrs. Olivo?
Yes.
Mr. Ortega?
Yes.
Mrs. Ruck?
Yes.
Mr. Miranda?
Yes.
Motion carried?
Next on the agenda is 10.1, which is the Addendum Everyone Has Received, Including Copies for the Public Section, which is for Approval of Custodian Maintenance Contract. Is there a motion to approve Resolution 10.1?
Motion.
Do we have, Mrs. Rocket, do we have a second?
Second.
Mrs. Cruz, any board discussion? Roll call, Mr. Erfan.
Mrs. Alvarez?
Yes.
Mr. Alvarez?
Yes.
Mrs. Cruz?
Yes.
Mr. Navarro?
Yes.
Mrs. Olivo?
Yes.
Mr. Ortega?
Yes.
Mrs. Ruck?
Yes.
Mr. Miranda?
Yes.
Motion carried?
This goes out to all of our maintenance personnel. Thank you so much for keeping our schools clean, for putting up with our, our, our events. And we truly appreciate you and I hope this is a bit token of appreciation. Moving on to Section 10.2 of the Addendum, Section of the Agenda, which is to approve Investment of Funds in the State Asset Rebate Program. Before I ask for a motion, just to give you some clarification, I think we're, Mr. Erfan and the administration are taking a very financial savvy approach.
Thinking.
Yeah, you know, we can earn some monies on this referendum while, as you saw, the explanation, the updates tonight, which can help us contribute back into any future principal payments. And in the meantime, allow us to earn and have some gains. I know that's not the right word, but have some earnings on interest rates to help us contribute towards a lot of our successes. So, Mr. Erfan and administration, I want to thank you for continually being savvy in understanding what Bogota needs and, and if we can earn, you know, whatever, $80,000, $80,000, $70,000 a month while we get permits and while we go through the next six months, that can, I believe it can pay for a lot. So, Erfan, thank you very much. And I just wanted the board to know that, I mean, you read it, you know it, but I just really want to reiterate that it's, it's intellectual financial process to do that, right? And not just park it where it doesn't earn something. In the meantime, so do I have a motion to approve Resolution 10.2?
Motion, Olivo.
Mrs. Olivo, do I have a second?
Alvarez.
Mr. Alvarez, any, Alvarez, any board discussion? Roll call, Mr. Erfan.
Mrs. Alvarez?
Yes.
Mr. Alvarez?
Yes.
Mrs. Cruz?
Yes.
Mr. Navarro?
Yes.
Mrs. Olivo?
Yes.
Mr. Ortega?
Yes.
Mrs. Ruck?
Yes.
Mr. Miranda?
Yes.
Motion carried?
Moving on to 10.3, I'll read it out loud. It's Approval of Transfer of Unanticipated Excess Current Year Revenue. Be it resolved that upon the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools, the board approves the following resolution. Whereas NJSA 18A 21-2, NJSA 18A 7G-31, and NJSA 18A 7F-41 permits a Board of Education to establish and or deposit into certain reservation, reserve accounts at year end. And whereas the aforementioned statute authorizes procedures under the authority of the Commissioner of Education, which permits a Board of Education to transfer unanticipated excess current revenue or unexpended appropriations into reserve accounts during the month of June by Board Resolution. And whereas the Bogota Board of Education wishes to transfer unanticipated ex-current year revenue or unexpended appropriations from the General Fund into a current expense maintenance reserve account at year end. And whereas the Bogota Board of Education has determined that an amount not to exceed $500,000 is available for such purpose of transfer. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Board of Education, Bogota Board of Education, that it hereby authorizes the District School Business Administrator, Mr. Erfan Efsil, to make this transfer consistent with all applicable laws and regulations. Do I have a motion to approve and move 10.3?
Motion.
Mrs. Rocket, Mrs. Olivo, is that a second?
Yes.
Any board discussion? All in favor? We move, we move on to 11.1 on Committee Reports. Anyone have any committee reports? That was 10.44. Oh, we do not have 10.4.
No, we did them one by one.
We did it one by one, so it was 10.1, 10.2, 10.3. We did.
We did just vote on 10.
Do we have 10.4? Okay.
So do I have to shift this 11, 11.1?
A roll call.
Didn't we do that just now?
No, no.
I motioned, she seconded.
Oh, I'm sorry. So, Mr. Erfan, any board discussion? Mr. Erfan?
Sure. Mrs. Alvarez?
Yes.
Mr. Alvarez?
Yes.
Mrs. Cruz?
Yes.
Mr. Navarro?
Yes.
Mrs. Olivo?
Yes.
Mr. Ortega?
Yes.
Mrs. Ruck?
Yes.
Mr. Miranda?
Yes.
Motion carried?
Moving on to 11.1 on Committee Reports. Any committee reports this evening?
We did not meet as a committee in negotiations, but I did meet with Mr. Kennedy during the week and save you guys some time. And we did go over in depth what we just voted on related to the maintenance and custodial.
Yep. I think we were well below the medium, if that was to say.
No, it was a great meeting and, and, you know, it wasn't really necessary to bring the whole committee together.
Absolutely.
And he did a great job breaking down for me what they were doing and why we're doing it. And it made sense, so we did it.
Okay, perfect. Next on the agenda is 12.1, Old Business. Do we have any old business, board? Next on the agenda is 13.1, New Business. Do we have any new business?
I do want to just say one thing, and as a person that's been hiring each year, this is one of the first years that I can remember as superintendent, that we are getting some real quality candidates. But I'm also seeing people defecting from other districts because our salary guide has improved. So I did want to say kudos to our negotiation team and the board. Over the last two contracts, we've become very competitive and we saw people looking to come to us, leaving where they've been for 10 years for the first time. So I did want to bring it up and acknowledge that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kennedy. On the new business, the only thing I would like to, and forgive me, and forgive me. You know, I looked at the dates with, I wish they would not have left so early, but I looked at some of the timeframes for the architect. And I'm just, you know, I think you could do more, I think we can push harder. So therefore, I mean, if I get one thing I can do is I would like to establish a committee of, of five people, stakeholders, two board members. You know, two board members, one chair, and maybe get, you know, two PTOs, which should be considered parents, and, and a member of the public. If that, you know, when I mean member of the public, totally not involved, right? Because that kind of gives you an idea of where people are at and give, and, and help, right? Because it's all good to leave it to someone's hands and, and I, and I trust our professionals. But I also know that our professionals are here to demand the teachings, the academics and everything else. So if there's anything that we can do as a board to get, you know, to get things going and the opinions and outreach the public for surveys, it would be ideal. So I don't have, you don't have to come up now and say it. We can, I can, you know, send me an email, say I'm interested and we'll put it in. So it'll be two board members, you'll have me as president as obvious. And then you'll have, it would be ideal to get two PTO members from anywhere, right? Because they have a lot of interaction with the parents and understanding. And, and one member of the public, we can put, we can advertise or something for it.
Especially the two buildings that are, the other two buildings that are affected.
Yeah, yeah. And we get, and we get five. And then we can have these meetings with the architect, Kennedy, or Kennedy's calendar has been insane. And just get them going, you know, help them out. I think we're here to help you, I think we've shown that. So I'd love to call that into order at some point. Do I need a vote or general consensus?
A general consensus, so you formulate the committee.
Okay. Can I get a general consensus from the board that you're okay and? Okay, so it's under the juris, okay, perfect, just for your knowledge. I'm moving on to 14.1, Section, Open the Floor to Hearings of the Public. Do I have a motion to open hearing of the public?
Motion, John.
Mr., Mr. Ortega, Mrs. Rocket is a second, any board discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any member of the public, please state your name and your address. You can speak on absolutely anything, five minutes.
Anyone raising their hand?
Do I have a motion to call?
Motion.
Hearing the citizens, so I'll take that as Mrs. Alvarez's motion, Mrs. Rock is a second, any board discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Now moving on to Executive Session, 15.1 of the Agenda. I understand as the board attorney would like to report on Molly Tagge versus Bogota Board of Education case. Whereas the C2.31 PL 1975, also known as Sunshine Law, authorizes a public body to meet in the executive, in executive or pro vate session under certain limited circumstances. And whereas said law requires the board to adopt a resolution at a public meeting before it can meet in such an executive or private session education that it hereby determines that it is necessary to meet an executive session on June thirteen, twenty twenty three at approximately eight eleven PM to discuss matters involving negotiations, litigation, personnel, and that the matter discussed would be made public when confidentiality is no longer required. An action pursuant to said discussion shall take place only at a public meeting. Action may or may not be taken. We'll reconvene in about ten minutes or less?
Yes.
Thank you very much, Mr. We have a motion to executive session?
Motion.
Mrs. Ruckert, do I have a second?
Alvarez.
Mr. Alvarez, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. See you in five minutes, public.